We have any changes to the agenda?
I believe there is a request from some board members to pull a resignation from the agenda. So if that is acceptable to the board, we can amend it to pull Mrs. Fisher's resignation off the agenda for tonight.
Okay. Then I need a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of Katie Fisher resignation. Motion by Mag, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. And we will move into our recognitions. And our budget hearing, Karen.
Do it up from up here so I can take my mask off so you can actually understand what I'm saying. Um, okay, so this is the official budget hearing for the 2122 budget. Last time you'll see me for a little while till we start all over again. So this is the revenue chart that shows the picture of the major categories of where we get our aid from. State aid is 40 years is makes up 48% of our income. Impact aid is 26%, Native American indigenous tuition and transportation is 17%. I mean, you set it up. That should be. Oh, you are. Pause. Wait, Teresa, what's the word? Timeout? We have a. We have an official's timeout. Or this, I guess this could be a TV timeout. Alright, now you need to get me. I can't see that far. It's like the comedy of errors tonight. There we go. Okay, so let's start over again. Mercy keeps changing my picture here. There we go. Alright, so let's start again. So Impact Aid. Oh, I didn't even touch anything that time. Makes up 26% of our revenues. State data again was 48, indigenous tuition and transportation is 17%. Use of reserves, which is fund balance and workers' comp, et cetera. Reserves is 8% and other miscellaneous stuff is 1% of our revenues. So diving a little deeper into the revenues. This is the state aid, the breakdown of state aid. And if you look from 21, 2122 is 23,331,969. And 2021 budget is 24 million. So it looks like we lost a million 50,000 essentially in state aid. While that is true, it's kind of skewed because we lost it in building debt, $1.3 million in building debt because we paid off part of our debt, so we don't have as much outstanding. So that obviously decreases. And then also our public and private access costs aids are down about 50%. And that's due to the difference in our threshold from year to year and the number of students that qualify for that stated threshold. Overall, if you take out the debt piece, our increase in aid is actually about 1% from year to year. So tax-related revenues. For property taxes, again, our tax levy is flat at $250,000. And Impact Aid is going up by 4.6 million, and that's primarily due to the transfer to capital of the 5 million. That will be discussed later. So here's the miscellaneous piece, tuition from our non-resident students that we have or students that are attending Salamaka that are foster students. So they're technically a resident student of addition of a different district in the area. Or it could be across the state and they just happen to reside here as a foster student. Transportation, once in a while, BOSI's will call up and say, hey, can you run our kids from point A to point B? So we get revenue for that. Interest revenues. Rental for BOSI's. Refund of prior year expenditures and BOSI's. BOSI's is a non-not-for-profit, so they can't have any profits at the end of the year. The amount of money that they have over their expenses divided back up into the districts. And that comes back into us. Indirect cost and Medicaid reimbursements are some other of the items. The biggest difference from last year to this year is the interest earnings. And that's because of the complete drop of interest rates across the board. Across the US, not just, not just locally. So next is the use of reserves. And it's just a little bit different from last year. It's a little bit down, $167,000 down from last year. The use of fund balance is $3 million for this year. ERS, which is the Employees Retirement Reserve, we're using 250,000 unemployment, 25,000 technology, 375, and workers' comp, 30,000, so $3.6 million. We're pulling from our reserves to push towards funding of our budgets. The two indigenous contracts that we have for tuition and transportation make up about $8 million. Currently, we have 579 indigenous students residing on the territory that were received tuition for. And then the transportation is prorated out by the number of students that are qualified as native and on territory being transported. Yes?
Our tuition aid. Are we behind on it?
Yes, we have not received this year's tuition. Information has been sent in twice. And we have not received it yet for 2021. And 1920, we received part of it. We have not received the old 1819 monies that are due to us. The reason that is delayed is because the contract reached its cap and needed to go back through the whole process in order to amend it. And as far as I know, that's in the next stage and it's still being processed in the state level. Expenditures. So the state requires us to report in three component categories. One is which is administrative, one is capital, one is program. Administrative is just that. It's administrative. What's it cost to run the district overall? Capital is a capital component for the facilities for transportation. I'm sorry, for facilities for transfer to capital. And for vehicle purchase. Program is everything else. All the instructional and actual transportation costs are all included in the programming component unit. So, which, you know, this is helpful. This is what the state wants. To me, it's not helpful. So I like to do this one that tells you where, where the benefit, where the expenses are by category. And because we're a service organization, the largest piece we should have is salaries and fringe, in which it is. Between salaries and benefits, 59% of the budget. That's the largest category. Next one down would be capital, basically because of the debt transfer or the debt servicing and the transfer to capital. You can see we pay BOSI's or we're slated to have $5.8 million or 12% of our budget with BOSI's. Materials and supplies is $944,000 across the board. Contractual of $3.7 million. $294,000 in equipment, 787 in vehicles. Debt services, 2.9 million. So that's really kind of a, you know, a categorized version of how we spend our funding here. So going back to the three-part required by the state, program is at 65%. Capital is at 25% and administrative is 10%. Comparing those to last year, capital was 21% last year. And admin was 11% last year and programming was 68% last year. If you take out the $5 million transfer to capital, which is a big item that kind of skews things. If you take that out for 2122, it's 16% of our funding is for capital, 11% for administrative and 73% is for programming. So looking at administration, these are the items that make up administration. The Board of Ed, the District Clerk, the Board meetings that we're sitting in right now, Superintendent's Office, Business Administration, Personnel, Public Information and Services, Central Services, which is print, copy, and a lot of the Technology Services, purchase of land. BOSI's Administration and Capital Expense. Curriculum Services, Supervision, which is the principals and their staff. And the benefits coinciding with all of the individuals in there. So across all these areas, it's $4.6 million for administration of the, of the district. Next step is capital. Tiny piece in Business Administration, Facilities and Grounds is really the bulk of, of the personnel in this area. Central Services, Transportation, that's the cost of the vehicles. Benefits related to all of the individuals in this area. That service, that's what we owe on the bonds for this year for principal and interest. And then the transfer to capital. So for full capital component unit is $11.8 million. Program costs, and again, I think I've said it from year to year that this is the meat and potatoes of what we do here. Superintendent's Office, Public Information Services, Safety and Security of all the buildings and grounds, Central Services. BOSI's Advent and Capital, Curriculum, Supervision, In-Service, which is all the professional development. Teaching Regular School, which is all the instructional individuals and staffing and also all their supplies and consulting contractual agreements as well. Special Education, same thing there for our students with disabilities. Occupational Education, that's the cost of sending our students to BOSI's for the CTE programs. Special Schools is Warrior Academy, Library Services, Computer-Assisted Programming. The Attendance Office, Guidance Office, Health, Psychology, Social Work, all those support services for our students. Extracurricular Activities is all the, you know, the co-curricular clubs and stuff. All the athletics, the entire cost of transportation minus the vehicles themselves. Recreation Services, that's $100,000 that's in for the playground over at Vets Park. And benefits for all of those people in this. And then the transfer to Special Aid Fund, which is a cost to cover our 20% share of Special Education Summer Programming. So overall, programming for the district is $31.184 million. And this is the transfer to capital that Bob, I believe you were going to address this with the transfer funding.
As we've done in the past several years, to comply both with previous controller audits about expending on encumbered funds and
Is your mic on?
It is, yes. Okay. With previous controller audits about getting our fund balance closer to 4%. It has been historically much higher than that. So we've done a transfer to capital for probably the last three or four budget cycles. And because of the anticipated work that we're having with Phase 3.3 and 3.4, looking at the increased cost of that, we're recommending a transfer of $5 million transfer to capital fund. And that will help us cover the anticipated construction of the multiple classroom addition at Prospect Elementary School, renovations to the track and field and other outside amenities and site improvements, as well as the District Office renovations and some internal classroom renovations in the old science rooms at Seneca Intermediate School. This is in keeping with our long-range financial plan. And we will apply this to future capital project work and try to leverage this to continue to get as much aid as possible on future capital work. And this comes at no increase to the tax levy.
Thank you. And the last piece that I have to cover is contingent budget. What happens if the budget goes down? That $16 million park over there does not get used unless 100% of the costs are covered. Any of the district buildings, that wouldn't be just for Vets Park, but it would be any of the buildings. Any of our fields, any of our classrooms, the gym, et cetera, wouldn't be able to be used unless everything was covered. Bus purchases and all equipment purchases would be eliminated. Non-union, non-certified personnel salaries would be frozen and transfers to capital would be removed. So if we go to a contingent budget, our tax levy can't increase if we go to a contingent budget. So it would remain at $250,000. It just would severely limit the use of our facilities. If we were to go to contingency. That's the last piece I have. Vote again is on May 18th from noon until 9:00 PM in the high school gym. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Karen? Thanks Karen for all the hard work that you do in keeping us fiscally sound.
Thank you.
It's appreciated. Okay, next we have our recognition for the Robotics Club.
Okay, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Beeler for some introductions with our Robotics Club.
All right, this is the exciting part of the meeting, ladies and gentlemen, where we get to take a field trip down to the steam wing. So you'll see up there in the upper right-hand corner where our students are. So we'd like to head down. They have a presentation in a location more suitable for our robotics.
I was wondering, would you be able to please come down to the box and show you in person?
There you go. All right. Be right down. Or I can push you in the chair down the hall. We can have a race.
If anybody can hear me, thank you.
Welcome everyone to Salamaka Robotics, Warrior Robotics. Behind me, you will see all of the robots we've made so far, minus two. Yeah. So I believe there's only three robots you haven't seen so far yet. Those are the three we'd just like to quickly focus on and show you what we've been working on this past year. This one, that one, and from the previous year that never got to compete, that one. We did it. Yeah, so depending on if you've seen the picture of the galaxy or read the book, this is Marvin. This one right here, after we realized we were really bad at color coordinating, we named, after we named Dr. Phillips. Lighter in color. And then that's Flynn and Echo. Yeah, Flynn and Echo. Let's see. Yeah, so for the 2020 model, the biggest thing that it had to do was to have the launcher ball really high up in the air, that is nine feet to the air. Drive around over very top school to pick itself up. Let's see, would you like to see it shoot a ball? We have it set up for shooter ball really quickly.
Just for the pressure, the soccer, even if it's the man and down across the play.
That's gonna be coming this way.
So we gotta get, we gotta score with it.
Those through a hole and it was, was it seven feet to air?
Nine and a half.
Nine and a half. So the robot would target it and would shoot it in there.
And so now this last year's robot unfortunately didn't get to compete. However, this year, which was a virtual game, and this is FTC, this is the smaller two-robot competition. The school was gracious enough to allow the second FTC team to be formed. It's about 17,450. The original team was 14,396. That's this one. So what we actually did is we did a classroom model. taught robotics as a class, me and Potter jointly. And taught students that you see behind me here, the next to me. How to build a robot without us contributing. I guess our help in building it, we just yeah, we taught concepts really. And then they did all the work, which was awesome. However, because we were allowed a second team, me and Connor were, used our now three years of FTC experience to build this robot. Using a program, Fusion 360 that we learned over the summer, that we learned over quarantine. When I first started learning, when quarantine first started, we had a lot of time. We decided to learn the program. We were able to 3D model everything on the robot and it was really nice to be able to show it off. Or to know where everything's gonna be before we built it. That way you never had any surprise. So we do have, if any of you can see this, Fusion 360, hold that on here, from this laptop. And currently not showing the robot because Fusion's still plugged in. Yeah, it's a technical error. Something we've had to work with. Okay, yeah, it doesn't seem to be working. So let's, let's move on. We'd like to actually have the students from that class that we jointly taught. Tell us, tell us a little bit about their robot. So for our robot, we learned a lot from Cole and Connor, we took a lot of their advice and experiences and applied it to this robot. So as you can see, we have a lot of pretty different parts. Especially here, the biggest, the, what we call the scooper. So this, the goal of this year is to take this from the ground and put them into the goal that you see there. And so what this robot would do with its two motors, it would move it would move the two motors simultaneously, but in opposite direction. So that the, the scooper would always stay parallel to ground. And so it would move fast enough that it could pick up the discs here and then as we would bring up the arm, it would keep this parallel, the discs would fall off. So as we would pick it up, it would keep it parallel. And then we could control this motor by itself so that when we got close enough to the goal, we could dump it. And so or to show that one off, I wanted to show this real quick as well. And what's behind me here. So this season, there isn't really a new FRC challenge. That was the big robot there. So instead of building a robot based on a previous games challenge, everyone in the class jointly decided that they wanted to build a robot of their own. And does anyone wanna swing one idea you have?
So the frame that we're, the frame that you see right there, we're taking off one of the chair robots that put the ribbon over there.
The original.
And we're, we're stripping it down and we're gonna, we're adding different types of wheels to it. And we're adding like, it's something like vacuum up stuff and clean up and recycle and all that. It's like a street sweeper type thing. It'll sleep up and vacuum and recycle and stuff like that all on its own, running out of sensors. And we, but we wanted to make it where it can like go on like smooth surfaces, grass or like rough like, like Salamica sidewalks, like that's rough. So we decided to make bigger wheels for it, so hopefully.
So that, and we also have electronics over there, which unfortunately they're just got a frame that students built completely on their own. Using a schematic. So they learned skills for reading schematics and wiring diagram. It's awesome.
All right, we're going on a trip with the camera. Hold on. Yeah, there you go.
It's not long course, so be careful with it.
See that? They're going on a trip. Yep. Alright. So, let's see, are we able to see that? So kids built this all on their own.
So there is this schematic that FRC has. It shows all the basic needs for any control system in any FRC game. And based on that, the students then went and built this.
Yeah, and it looks messy right now, but that's because they were just learning how to read the diagram and make a functional circuit. So our next step is to make it look nicer and fit it inside the robot in a way that's out of the way and functional. There you go. That works. That works.
There we go. So just kind of thinking in the future with our robotics course, Mrs. Dry and myself, Cole and Connor and Dr. Hayes, what we'd like to see in the future is this robotics class continue with our older students mentoring the younger students. Just, it worked so, it worked so well. So what we'd be looking at is in the fall, our new group of students would come in and we would call the class Robotics 1A. And it would just be a half a semester course, I'm sorry, half a year course. Those kids would be given five kits. And one of the kits, they would learn how to build the robot bases, various types of bases. Another kit would be an arm kit, so to learn these arms. Another kit would be some kind of a lift kit. Fourth kit would be an intake, because every game you're sucking something up into the robot. And the last kit, you always have to shoot or place or launch something. So that's what those younger kids would do during the fall. Then in the spring, those kids would be given a competition where they had to build a robot using their knowledge. Then in the spring, those kids would be given a competition where they had to build a robot using their knowledge from the fall. Happening concurrently, in the fall, kids who have already taken Robotics One A and One B, they would be enrolled in the same class at the same time. They would then be building a robot for the FTC competition, based on having an entire year's worth of practice. They would also be mentoring the younger kids on their builds through those five different, um, totes. And then as they move into the spring semester, this older group of kids, if their programming skills, um, are, are, make it possible, we would like them to then do the FRC competition, which is a very fast-paced, eight weeks, very high-tech, very intense. They could then do a robot, they would be done mid-March. The rest of that semester, they would continue mentoring the younger kids. And one of the things that Cole and Connor found is Fusion three sixty is a key, key program for these kids to know. It allows them to build using a CAD program. Instead of trial and error and mashing and trying to get things to fit together, they can design it in Fusion three sixty so that when they then make their cuts, they know it will fit together. So that was probably one of the largest growth, um, learning for the teachers and our students.
Yeah, and before we go in further, I do need to give these two credit, uh, our suffering would not be where it is right now if it wasn't for these guys right here, and I, I could cry, but they, during COVID, when everybody else was quitting, we were, we were learning Fusion by their direction. We were building, we were building drive bases by their direction, we were having breakout rooms, and, uh, these guys were all contributing and saying, I, I wanna do it this way. We did our pros and cons, and then we, and then we went over here and we actually, they did lessons in training, and they, it's just unreal what they have done, and, uh, they're true leaders. So we have to give them all the credit for this class, and they're very thankful. Back to you, Miley.
Um, so everything that we've seen is impressive, especially the collaboration and any mentorship. Could we just hear a little bit about how FTC looked this year?
Yeah. It's right here.
Uh, yeah, well, it's currently on the field, and.
So, and let me just, so FTC is first technology competition?
Yeah.
First tech challenge, sorry. Oh, it's really, you gotta see in there.
Sorry.
So, um, it's like FRC, which is the first robotics challenge, um, but a little bit smaller. So this year, and actually, when did we start with FTC?
Uh, so we, because we had a second team for the youth, just as of seniors, with meaningful. We almost immediately started as soon as the kickoff happened in the first week of September. And have warped on it until our first match was over. All right, we just wanted to, one last thing, show you how this robot works, 'cause we, we think it's pretty cool. Uh, what was, uh, possible, uh-oh, is we've been working on the drive base, it's a power robot that creates the field. If there's a problem, uh, that's why we have tested everything fully, and it's, it's, we think it's great.
So their, their competition, uh, remind me, was it the end of March? Their competition at the end of March, their final match, their square drive, one of the major brackets snapped. So they very quickly apopled it together to get to their final match, so I believe they do 3D printing.
Yeah, I spent, yes. All right, right, so I'm gonna test the drive around. So you're not, the robot is moving in a very orthodox way. And what you're seeing is called square drive. So if you know what a cap your wheel is, or. Yeah, or what the front wheels on a chopping mower, it's essentially a motorized wheel effect. So you have a single wheel in the housing, that is motorized, and then that wheel can now turn. And that allows you to move in any direction. Also, the watch rush, that has to go, that's all.
You're ready.
So, mostly I line it up by hand here.
You're ready.
I know, I need the. All right, come in. Yeah, so we did math to make it so it could get it in from anywhere on the field, it would probably, how hard it would be to run. Yeah, so the basic aim is, this is the field we're playing on, and we have to, to shoot these orange rings into one of these three goals, the higher you go, the more points, so you start a little shot there. And then there's this white line that you're not allowed to shoot forward of. And the other thing that's important, we can't go off, especially with the positive period, is where the robot has the last three games in the high goal, and that means one of these three squares, based on the stand, and, uh, cards on the line. We were able to do that, and very successful.
So, so could you just, like, so that, our volume part, was actually exceptionally challenging, and I think really significant. So just go through that a little bit slower, so we can understand the character of that one, to figure out. What he said was that the robot essentially knew where it was, it could center it, made calculations, and it could move down the field without, did you make anything?
Uh, yeah, no, I don't work with control, and so actually, it's a very fairly consistent, essentially, allowing the people back where they're from, you know, three wheels and a box on it. Yeah, so there's tracks the X-Y position of the robot as it's driving, sprung into the ground. And as it moves along, the complicated math happens, and it's always made in overlays, that we can now see where the robot is, and it knows where it is on the field at any given point. And I can also broadcast on the computer for the robot to follow it on this, uh, it's extremely useful for creating on this, we have to add that to the chat.
Right, you guys all work with that one?
No, I don't. A follow it, it'll follow there.
That's the important thing, right?
I, I don't like over 20P files this year, uh, program files that it's, that, that's, uh.
And all the parts are, you like.
Uh, so all, all, it is all 3D printed, and all.
In there, it's all 3D printed in there.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
For the metal, yeah.
All right, so it's actually, and the other parts that we've actually used is the pocket CNCs that we own. Uh, we actually.
Oh, that's the CNC.
Yeah. So we had this problem of a double beer which stripped itself, actually both, you have a double. And there was so much torque happening on, on some of these small beer, that plastic ones, we could not cut it. It happens a few other issues to try and figure out what it was. And, yeah. But probably not, we'll probably be able to see this on the screen right here, but that is shredded. And so we're, we're like, we need these made out of metal, but it's a really custom-made double beer. So we had went and ordered how you CNCs with Fusion three sixty. Yeah, so I created a program that would continually double beer fire. And this is actually where we picked up, essentially, I believe, our official second software. We have something up, and from Horchel Brothers Precision, 'cause originally, these parts of the double beer took around nine hours to do, which was small feed. And we were cutting out two, we did one and a half or two, it's block, solid block of aluminum. And after one of them actually came and looked at our bot, we seen, you know, our double beers being made, and saw how long it took to make one. So we cut highly gaseous metal, and actually laid out, uh, seven, five blocks. Five blocks of the double beer, so all we had to do was put a piece in it, and that significantly cut down the time. Yeah.
So you said that it's faster?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a, or from robot precision.
They, no, he's springbell.
There.
Okay, and so one of the, one of their workers, I, I think he was a, one of their VPs, actually came and watched the CNC machine milling something, and he was like, oh my gosh, how long does it take? And it took like seven hours to mill one, he said, I can bang that out in like two hours. And these guys didn't want them to do all the work, so rather, Horchel Brothers made a, like a blank, gave them the shape, but then they cut out the teeth with their CNC. So, and also gave us a huge box of aluminum stock, that's a donation. And to be honest with you, you're only hearing an ounce of what they have really done on their own 3D file, codey program, so, designs, so I could that.
I can bring just a second on Cole, at the beginning of the, uh, at the beginning of the pandemic, we were trying to run our robots as a staff. Cole created a simulator of the field so that we could test our robots in a ver- in a virtual setting and run it, and it was like unbelievable, so kudos to this guy.
And can I give one final bit of recognition, was I, how many students are enrolled in the class? Is it like twelve, fifteen? These students showed up faithfully for their Zoom classes twice a week, and participated and built and sent files to Mrs. Dry and to these guys. And it was just so impressive, the participation that the students put in. Even though a couple of our kiddos from last year knew how much more fun it is to be in here, they were still willing to do the online version. Any questions?
I have one more question. So, one of the things that we consistently talk about are transferable skills, right? So you build a robot in high school. Yeah, unless you're building robots out there in five years, I mean, that's awesome, that's cool. So I'm gonna ask, especially some of the, how many seniors do you have here?
Uh, fifteen.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you, go back three or four years ago, and what I'd like you to do is not necessarily talk about Fusion three sixty or the ability to construct something, but has the opportunity to, have here changed anything about you, about what you tend to do that will be valuable than any other material?
So robotics, so. My profession, I'm a, I'm a, the, the, the creation, I'm, I'm working on all that, creating stuff. And being in robotics, it just kinda helps. If we are good down, like, could look at a problem from a, from a different angle, like from the forward perspective. I think what I've really taken away from it is how to, uh, yeah, kind of, kind of what kind of said, but really to look at things with a different mindset. Really open your mind to all of the possibilities or, uh, solutions to a problem. Please improve ones that might be useful, pick ones that will be, build those, uh, but really, it's brought about some pretty serious critical things in school.
And these guys got very comfortable with, it's an ugly word, but failure. They got very comfortable with things not going the way they wanted it to, and rather than get frustrated and walk away, they said, well, all right, that didn't work, let's try it.
And that's why you'll see things will break in front of us, so we're giving the presentation, yeah, it's well off a comfort. Probably, like, for the twenty nineteen, eighteen year, we had a down to the quarterfinals, and our FRC stuff was in with, uh, track status. And we got quarterfinals, so something really wrong with our batteries, the robot died, it was gonna go forward. And we really, we felt bad 'cause we lost, uh, these players, so I was really like, let's do another one. So we did another competition, got to the quarterfinals again, and failed to change that.
I still blame it on Dr. Beeler, he made a deal with another team to do a buddy lift, and they picked our robot up and bloop, dropped it right on its side. Yeah, we all told them, no way. Yep.
I can tell you one thing that I noticed from the last four years, and you guys could, could not venture, so Dr. Beeler said, hey, by the way, you're in FRC, so we're like, what's that? And, uh, so when we first built our, started building our first robot, you know, we were stalling metal, we were, it was trial and error, there was very little pre-design, we were just trying to figure it out. Now, if you, if you fast forward to here, everything we expected on this robot, most of the other robots we pointed out, is already predetermined. Fusion, uh, parts of Fusion fit perfectly, and that's great. So, um, that's a huge thing that you guys just made a run, is that this, this facility is unbelievable, and everything had our favorite assets. And one for nothing, to be honest with you, yeah.
The high school, that was four years ago, when we presented, uh, the robots with the gun.
The scissor wing.
It didn't look like them. I mean, I, you guys, I mean, you guys worn out and smooth, you were nowhere near as comfortable. So when I look at one of those transferable skills, you're ability is impeccable. Right, so those skills, the ability to interact, problem solve on the feet, and answer questions, is critically important for somebody who wants to go into this field, and these opportunities like this give them a chance, and they play, two of these guys have come so far from where they were two years ago, when they were asked questions, and, you know, they opened up the vault and show and talk in language that nobody understood, and now they're out here, and they're significantly more happy and comfortable, and that, I think, is probably one of the most significant things that's gonna carry them in whatever career path they go through.
I gotta say, I don't think we would be where we're at, where we're at now, if it wasn't for Cole and Connor. And I gotta thank you guys for letting us do robotics, 'cause that, back like last year, my first year, when we had after-school, and that gave me something to look forward through at, through school, keep my, something.
Keep those grades up, keep the grades up. Yeah, so thank you immensely for these opportunities. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we love it.
Thank you. Thank you for going down. Here, we'll return back to the, uh, the rest of the board, please. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you so much.
From robotics.
And that was an awesome presentation. Thank you to the robotics team and the teachers and everybody that helps out. Okay, next, we have our school safety and reopening.
All right. Good evening and thank you. Uh, just a note as required by some of the New York State for recent New York state legislation. The latest version of our school safety plan. Available on our website. Um, our school operations at this point are primarily in person with about eighty-five to eighty-seven percent of our students attending instruction. Monday, Friday, the prospect, Seneca. And Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday in high school with NCA. Once again, any of our students who choose to be all right. Um, any of our students who choose to be remote, um, still have that option uh, to and so essentially then no one is required to be on campus. So overall, we have successfully transitioned to a primarily in-person instruction for five days a week. I'd like to just acknowledge that the success is primarily due to the collaboration between our instructional faculty, our support staff and our administrative team. This has truly been a team effort. I'd especially like to thank all of our staff during this teacher appreciation week. Because no matter what your role in the district is, our learners are always watching the grownups and learning from them. So I'd like to just thank each one of the grownups and adults in our district for the work that they do every day. Thank you.
Thanks for Dr. Beeler. Okay. Then we will go on to public communications. Do we have anybody from Title VI? No? Okay. Any other communications? Yes. I'm sorry.
Yes. If you don't mind. Um, as Ward five alderman, I would just like to thank the board, the three Salamaka City Central School District Superintendents, the Seneca Nation, the city mayor council for working together for an amazing opportunity the school district gave the city in Vets Memorial Park complex. We all know that the city is not a financial, does not have a financial ability to do what our school did. And for all of our community. So I want to just thank you. Thank you. Salamaka school system because it is awesome. And thank you for letting me speak.
We like good words. Next we'll move on to our central office message. Karen, do you have anything else? You said, said your piece. Okay. Dr. Beeler?
Same boat. I'm uh, I'm fine. I just again, wanted to thank all of the adults in the district and especially recognize our, our teachers this week. Um, they do an incredible job. Our students wouldn't be where they are. Our students wouldn't be as safe as they are in schools if it weren't for the collaboration and the willingness of our teachers and staff to work together. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So we'll move on to the board of education. Brad, do you want to start? Okay. Carrie?
Yeah, I wanted to, Mark stole my thunder. I wanted to let teachers know that they are appreciated. Also, it's nurse appreciation as well coming up. Let our nurses know that they also are appreciated. Uh, for me, it's not just one week. It's fifty-two out of the year, fifty-three if uh, I want to be really uh, sucking up to somebody, but um, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, they don't get enough credit. You know, we say it all the time. We appreciate what they do. We think what they do, but honestly, they don't get enough credit, you know? Especially in today's climate. Um, we've all hear it, you know, it's, it's all over social media. It's in the news. It's everywhere. You know, what are teachers doing to help kids with education? And they blame them like it's their fault. Um, it, it's, and it's totally unfair sometimes when you hear those things, you know, it's, nobody asked for this pandemic. Nobody asked for this situation, but it's one of the things where we just want to make sure that they are aware that we do appreciate everything they are doing for our kids, you know, and everything they are doing for education. So that was pretty much it. Oh, wait, no. Uh, I did want to say that. Yes, I agree with Janet. That's park is pretty awesome. So happy that uh, we're finally able to, you know, enjoy the full use of it. I can't wait to see more things going on over there. Can't wait to see double headers with baseball and lacrosse and everything else that goes on. And it's just going to be exciting to hear, you know, that park in action, you know, even more so than it is now. Thank you.
Just would, would like to say thank you to everyone that took time out of their schedule to come to the ribbon cutting ceremony. It was lovely and it was I'm sure a lot of work to organize that and put it together. And I'm happy appreciation day to everybody because it takes everybody to run the school system as efficiently as we are. I enjoyed the robotics presentation. It's amazing. Although I was looking at a toolbox and I have no clue what all those things are for, so I wouldn't be good at it. And um, just, you know, I'm grateful how far the school system has come and it's, it's just beautiful.
Bill?
I think a lot of the parents today appreciate our teachers a lot more after having the kids at home and having to be taught uh, and teach your kids at home and help them. So um, I would like to take this time to be in its teachers appreciation week to um, say how much we do appreciate the teachers. And without them, um, we wouldn't have the great kids that are graduating out of Salamaka High School that we do. Thank you.
Think everybody stole my thunder. Being an educator, I, I know how important, you know, your teaching staff is, but, but also not only teachers, you know, teacher aides, therapists, nurses, bus drivers, cleaners, everybody who worked in the school is a teacher. You know, all the students learn something from everybody. So I, I want to say thank you to, to all the staff that work in the school. And uh, we really do appreciate your efforts. Thank you. Oh, and Anna Bets Park was awesome.
Meg?
And it's the same thing, but it's important to reinforce it. I do what, you know, Carrie said this year in particular and in part of last year, um, just the ability that teachers and teachers assistants had to pivot um, multiple times and, and this year too, to go from, you know, and an online model or a hybrid model to now in person and to make multiple changes throughout the school year. Just that takes, that takes a lot of energy. It takes a lot of talent to do that. And we, we did it really well. I mean, I think all of us kind of monitor feedback from the community and social media. And there's much more praise for our, our faculty and our staff than there are complaints. And the complaints are few and far between. And that's a testament, you know, to the talent that we have in our district. So just, you know, thank you to everyone. I have an appreciation for sports. I've never really wanted to like play football or anything until today when I was like, I actually do want to run out on that field. I don't want to get tackled though, just for the record. But yeah, this is such an impressive facility. Um, and I like the comments from other, you know, parents in other districts and kids in other districts where they are looking forward to playing here if they haven't already. And it just, it reflects so well on us and with such a point of pride, you know, for, for our kids in our community. So yeah, it was just really impressive and I'm, I'm glad I was, you know, able to take part in it.
I'm going to echo the sentiments of everybody else here that um, thank you to all the teachers for everything that you do for our kids because you make our kids your kids and you embrace them and um, care about them just like their parents would. And um, that says something. And you know, during COVID, you did see the teachers kind of with their bags packed. They were in school one session, but hey, ready to go online the next day. And they did have to make that quick change and they did it. Um, and we're very fortunate that we have the staff that we do. I think the testament to the teachers and just like Dale said, everybody in this district that is a teacher in one way or another. Whether it's a bus driver that tells you to put your seatbelt on so you know how to put your seatbelt on. Uh, whether the cleaner teaches you how to pick something up if you drop it, whatever it is. The teachers teach and everybody else supports them. And um, you know, we proved uh, out of twelve hundred schools in New York state, you know, we came in at seventy-four. So it's a testament to everybody out there. What a great job that they're, they're doing with our kids. So again, thank you. You, your praise, um, just, we can't say enough good things about what you're doing. So it's very much, uh, I know I'm repeating, but it, it can't be said enough. Uh, as far as that park, you know, um, I've been fortunate enough to go to three football games and all of them were snow. Uh, so I don't know if it's me or the park itself, but uh, it's beautiful whether it's snow or whether it's seventy. And um, it's really nice to see other teams across the way marvel at what the field is like. And when we play music or put something up on the, our little Jumbotron. Um, how you can see them dancing or when the lights are going back and forth, um, that it's they're, they're really in awe of it. And um, makes me happy because I'm glad they're jealous of it because, and I'm, I'm really glad that we could do something for not just our students, but the community itself. Um, you know, sometimes I feel like Salamaka gets dumped on. And I'm proud to be from Salamaka and I want, I'm proud that we were able to work with the nation and work with the city and come up with the plans and, and implement it so that, you know, there's something nice for generations to come. So thanks to all the board members, the administration, you know, the city, the nation for all working together to come up with that great, great park. So thank you.
So um, uh, just a couple of really brief comments. Um, I do want to acknowledge that section six was there at the grand opening tonight. They were off to the patio side where the picnic tables were um, with Adam Bennett. So um, they were off to the side. Uh, so we do appreciate them coming. I did get a notice from the section six treasurer. Just pontificating what a beautiful sight it is. And his last comment was, I can't wait for the section to host events here. So I will follow up with them. So that was amazing. Um, I do want to just say two quick things about the park, but not directly about the park. So for the board members and really Teresa and Barb, um, were on the board then and the other board members have come. In two thousand and thirteen, Walter Klopp, Al Mendel and Eric Butler, who was on the board, uh, came forward to the district and said, um, because Great Valley had done a full value reassessment and their property taxes quadrupled, or it felt like they quadrupled. They said, can you come to a meeting in the Great Valley Community Center at, at the town hall? And I said, sure. They said, it will be hostile. And I said, great. Um, uh, I don't know that I have answers to what Great Valley does as a township, but we went and we talked and one thing led to another and Assemblyman Joe Jilly was there and Joe said, I think I can help, but not alone. And Joe found, uh, with the help of Walt Klopp, uh, Al Mendel and Eric Butler and Joe's staff. They found impact aid. And we did some more research and we reached out to Tom Reed's office because it was federal, not state. And um, a whole lot of work happened. And I, I think I reflect back. We were thinking maybe we'd get fifty thousand dollars, maybe seventy-five. We had no idea. Little did we know what that would turn into for this district. And a lion's share of what we've been able to accomplish today dates back to community members like Mr. Klopp, a longtime English teacher here. And uh, Al Mendel, longtime Salamaka businessman in the area and Eric Butler. A public servant at the time, uh, as a school board volunteer. And when people work together, um, great things happen. Teresa said in her speech today, what if? And then it became, wow, look what we've done. I would add one simple thing. What's next? We have great things happening in this community with the Seneca Nation, with the city, with the county, um, in the school district. And um, I think that great things are looming even larger and bigger and better in the horizon. And I'm awfully proud of um, this district, this community, our staff. Uh, and Dale is right. Uh, it's a staff appreciation. We will, as we've done in the past, we'll get lunch for the teachers. And we'll follow up with that. Um, we've typically done that on the half days in June, but quite frankly, I don't know what the calendar looks like. And I'm not sure anybody does yet. Uh, because of the changes, but we will make sure that um, our staff, uh, as we have done for the past um, eight or nine years. We'll make sure that they know how much we value them, uh, at a time when they can enjoy it and um, be able to celebrate with each other. Um, I'm just going to add one last thing. Uh, I, I do want to recognize all of the hard work and last week um, or so was administrative assistance week and we talked, uh, and Janet, thank you for recognizing us. But there are a lot of folks behind the scenes that make us look a whole lot better than we actually are. Our support staff and our clerical staff and all of the support personnel that really truly helped keep the trains running on time. And everyone pitches in and that's what has made Salamaka successful. So congratulations to everyone. That's park was a smashing success. And I can't wait for the next contest and uh, what mountains we can conquer next. Thank you.
All right. Next we will move on to the consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Sue, second by Dale. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I got a few.
Okay.
Uh, Karen, can you explain what's going on with our loss in the cafeteria? I thought all these years we were actually making money.
Yeah. The reason that shows up is we use uh, approximately six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars of the, of the cafeteria fund balance alone to fund all of the equipment in the Seneca multipurpose cafeteria, as well as all of the equipment in the prospect cafeterias. So that fund balance, um, to pay for those, those equipment that got hit in the one year. So it looks like we've lost money. So for that fiscal year, yeah, it looks like we lost money, but we really didn't because we're taking it out of the fund balance that was available. And actually we're required by law to keep that balance even lower than um, the four percent here. By law, um, the cafeteria fund balance cannot be any more than three months worth of your contractual costs. So for us, it's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and we had close to eight hundred thousand. So that paid for all of that equipment. So that's why it looks like a loss.
Um, just as a reminder, can you explain what's happening next year again with our cafeteria?
Um, we are under contract right now with a company called Brigade. We are working to um, recruit um, staff, staffing in there. Um, for the entire cafeteria operations will be brought back in-house to the district and we will no longer have a food service management company. Brigade will also help us not only recruit and train our staff, but also full operations manuals. And um, we're also going to be working with the Seneca Nation Farm to see what products they can offer us to provide for um, more natural holistic indigenous foods within our cafeterias and um, to see, you know, what they're going to be involved in um, our menu planning as well. And I've also asked Mike to um, potentially sit on the interview committees for our new staffing. If he's available or him or someone. Yes. Yep. Yeah. Yeah. They'll all be required to apply again because we have to go through the whole civil service thing. Um, because right now they're employees of the food service manager, the yeah, food service management company. So we have to, um, actually the next board meeting I'll come with the whole list of new positions that we'll need to hire through civil service. So the Brigade is going to help us recruit and uh, go through the whole interview process as well. To select the people that um, will be running it, running operations. Chef Drew will still be here. Uh, he's just got one more year before he retires and then, um, so he'll be here to kind of maintain as well as a lot of the other staff. Um, or probably maybe even all of the staff, it's going to depend on if they want to apply or not. To maintain consistency. And then he can use his expertise as well to help train the new individual. This is a big job. It's not just going and cook what you feel like. Um, because of all the different requirements with the Because of all the different requirements with the child nutrition laws, that you need to make sure that you have the right number of grains and the right amount of salt and not too much this and that and all that good kind of stuff. So that's what we're aiming for. Next time, like I said, we'll have some, a list of positions that we need to hire. I hope to get advertised here shortly. So we can start getting some resumes in and at some point in time, I'm going to invite y'all down for dinner for the individual to do some cooking. So the individuals that are the final candidates will actually cook a school required. We want to call it, you know, all the nutrient ingredients and all that kind of stuff. Meal that we could serve to the students. They will have to cook and serve it to, to you and the other individuals involved in, in hiring. So it's like, what's that?
It's going to be like chopped?
Yeah, really. Um, so yeah, it'll be, it'll be great. Once we, once we get there. It's a lot of work to do. We've been with a food service management company for well over 15 years. So to bring it back in-house is, it's going to be a ton of work. Already has been a ton of work, but I think it's something that we're, we're ready to do. We want to give our kids food that they're going to eat and like, that's not just out of a box, so to speak. I, I think it's even longer than that. I think it's like late eighties, I believe. Yeah. So it might be like late eighties. And that's probably one thing that'll, that'll help with recruitment as well is that the benefits that are provided by a food service management company are not anywhere near what they will be working for an individual school district.
Jobs are going to go to local residents and and again, it's another way that we're trying to help the community, not just pass things along. And I love the idea that we can put some indigenous foods out there and that we can serve that. So when people come from out of town, it'd be great to be able to have our shops prepare indigenous food so that they could see what's made in our school.
Does that mean fry bread Fridays?
Maybe. You never know.
I was, we would love to have, I'd love to have fried the bean sandwiches with the salt pork. That's my favorite. The fry bread, the little mini ones, not the huge ones. Fry bread sliders.
Thanks, Karen.
Any other questions?
Can Karen go over the 24-page appropriation status detail report?
Let's calm down. Okay, we have a motion by Sue, second by Dale. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And under old business policy 7551, we need a motion to approve that policy. Motion by Meg, second by Carrie. Are there any questions?
Just a clarification. This is harassment of students. There are multiple other harassment policies we are working on currently.
Thanks, Bob. We have a motion by Meg, second by Carrie. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item B is to amend the civil service job title. So we need a motion to amend this job title. Motion by Brad. Second by Dale. Bob, do you just want to go through this real quick?
Actually, I'm going to ask Karen because this is her department.
Yeah. When we asked civil service originally, they told us it's a records and inventory clerk. And then after the board had approved the position, et cetera, they said, no, it's records receiving and inventory clerk. So it adds a slight change to the actual description and to the qualifications. But we have 13, 13 applicants. I don't know yet. I haven't gone through them all.
Okay. Then we have a motion by Brad, second by Dale. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carries. And item seven is our Cataragius County School District Resource Officer Program Agreement. So we need a motion to approve the SRO contract. Motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? And then this is just the one year?
It's one year for the three resource officers.
Okay.
It includes training, their equipment, access, they're here 12 months, but during the summer they do accumulate some time by being here at evenings and weekends. So there is some downtime during the summer, but we're always covered with at least one SRO.
Okay. So we have a motion by Dale, second by Carrie. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And my favorite, capital project change orders. So we have a motion, we need a motion to approve all of the change orders and allowance distributions. Motion by Bag. Second by Sue. Are there any questions on any of the change orders? Okay. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And item C is our reserves plan, annual review and updates. A motion to approve that plan. Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Can we just go over real quick the reserve plan?
Sure. The only change to it is the addition of the actual timeframe when it will be reviewed, when transfers will be made. And because we had talked about it, we were going to do it and we have done it, but it just wasn't in writing in the actual policy itself and when those dates would occur. So I added that last section.
Thanks, Karen. Right. We got a motion by Dale, second by Brad. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And our turf field protective cover. And so we need a motion to approve the protective cover for 128,804 with Snaplock Industries. And that, that's what we looked at the last meeting. Okay. So did you motion so? Second by Carrie. Are there any questions?
I know we've addressed this several times, but why we're doing that. And then also just to reassure the community that as beautiful as that turf is, that it was always our intention to have powwow at Vets Park.
So the protective cover is so that we can host multiple events that are not athletic, like the Marvin J Curry powwow or movies in the park. Currently in the turf, you can't put lawn chairs on there. They'll pierce the protective membrane of the turf and will do some damage to it and possibly avoid the warranty. So looking at the alternate non-athletic types of uses at the park, the bike rodeos or the powwow or the prom or graduation or a whole host of other activities. We looked at a number of protective coverings and this is what we settled on. It's less expensive than some of the other ones that we had looked at. It is a large quantity. We're not obligated to protect and cover the entire field every time we do that, but this is so we can actually host additional events. I should caution, and if Karen was here, she would probably say this too. Adding the protective layer doesn't mean that everyone can use it and you can have a monster truck rodeo there. But it means we can host more events. It will take a significant amount of time to install and then uninstall. But we do, like Karen is trying to demonstrate behind me, I feel as though I'm getting photobombed behind me. It snaps together. It can load bear quite a bit. And certainly it'll open up the park for other venue type of events, concerts and things. And Karen's trying to hit me in the head with that, which I'm surprised it's taken her that long.
Stuff is not, you're not going to drive your truck across that. Could we drive the, what do you call it? The gator thing across the, absolutely. So this will be put down for the powwow. Be put down for, if it's here in time for the graduation ceremony for prom, any kind of events that'll be on the turf that could potentially have food or drinks or popcorn or anything like that, you know, on the turf. So this is going to protect the turf from getting ruined. Of a grid to it. So it's not slippery. There's also holes in it. So the water will go down through. So if it was like today and we had the downpour, it still is going to drain into the field and then drain from the field.
Thank you, Karen.
And just so you know too, you know, we did make, we did consult with the powwow committee. So that everybody understands and we did make sure that the park would be suitable to have vendors at, at the event. So just to reassure everybody.
Has the ability to watch our meetings all the time. I mean, we've, we've said that repeatedly. That was as a board, something that was really important to us, but now that we have more people in the community that have seen the park there, they're asking those questions and they're concerned. So I don't think we can say it enough. In fact, you know, if you're watching on Facebook Live right now, it'd be nice if you had a status that was public that was like, can't wait to have powwow at Vets, you know, park. That would be, that would be helpful. To kind of get that out there. Cause I think, you know, that's been the only apprehension that I've encountered from people is there, they just assume the powwow is not going to be there. And that's just not the case.
Correct. Okay. We have a motion by Sue, second by Carrie. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And then item eight is our personal consent agenda with the removal of the elementary teaching resignation. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change.
A motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Meg. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Do we have any new staff that we are going to introduce?
I do not believe so.
We have our board information and reports. So we have our second reading of the policy 7551, which we approved. Vets Park Memorial Park Usage Fee Chart Schedule, which I don't know about anybody else, but I'm already getting questions about when it's going to be available. So if we have any comments, let's get them back so we can get that approved.
Yeah. And this is just the draft. So when are we going to look at making this official?
I wanted to get it to everyone. We had worked on it.
We had worked on it at the finance committee. Now that it's out there publicly, officially, I would imagine at the next board meeting, we could, am I not on mercy? It's on. There we go. Let's try that again. Okay. We wanted to get the draft powwow or the draft fee structure out there. I will just kind of give an asterix. I'm sure there will be community input. I'm sure there will be multiple revisions. We have some ambiguity and uncertainty for, you know, groups in the community that want to use the fields on a more regular basis, youth sports, youth recreation, type of activities, leagues. We just want to go slow. We don't want to get locked into anything. We don't want a group monopolizing the entire field. So only one group can use it. We do plan on having open community hours, kind of like at the ice rink, open skate or open field time. So the community can come and use it so that it's not just structured league play. And I will just simply say that there will be multiple revisions. Chad Vertozek, the Assistant Athletic Director and doing some of his administrative work. Is that sports and activities and things that we do as part of our program. And then local groups will have ample opportunity to use the fields and then outside groups that are not part of the Salamaka community. We will keep right now, if I had to guess, Mr. John, opening date is, the, the park's going to be used an awful lot. Bring and secondary spring sports because of the COVID changes to the schedule. I'm guessing it'll probably be sometime in June when outside groups will be able to get there. Maybe certainly by July, I would imagine, but because of the schedules, my best guess would be sometime in June.
Okay. Then we have our upcoming events. Our Board of Education Personnel Committee meeting on the sixth. May 11th is finance, May 12th is indigenous education. And then May 18th is our budget vote. Please come out and vote. We would really appreciate it. And then May 31st is Memorial Day. So school will be closed. Again, thank you all the teachers and staff for all the hard work that you do. We do have an executive session and we do not yeah, for the purpose of personnel. And we do not foresee any action coming out. So we need a motion to, when to executive session. Motion by Dale, second by Sue. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Again, thank you, everybody for coming.